Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is July the 18th, 2017 at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Jim Blunk, normally known as Lion Jim Blunk, to lead us in our invocation from the Gideon's International Granbury Camp, followed with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Fledge led by Councilman Tony Mobley. All rise, please.
Heavenly Father, we pray for the city of Granbury, for the citizens, and for each member of the city council, for all the employees, the police and fire, and all city employees, Lord, we ask that you bless them. Father, I pray that you give these people, the council, I pray that you give them wisdom and discernment, that they would make decisions that are pleasing to you and that benefit all the citizens of our city. I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you for joining the pledge of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. I honor the Texas flag, the flag of peace, freedom, and justice, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you for being here with us tonight. We're going to start out with our consent agenda. The consent agenda has items on there. The first item being consider approving the city council meeting minutes of July the 5th, 2017, regular meeting. Second item is to consider adopting a resolution, 1713, ordering a general election for the city of Granbury to pay on November the 7th, 2017, for the purpose of electing council persons Place 4 and Place 6, and authorizing a contract with the Hood County Election Administration to furnish election services, equipment, personnel, early voting dates, and all other related matters. Item number 3 is to consider awarding a bid number 6523-DASH8 to Lone Wolf Construction, LLC, based on their bid amount of $237,034 and $50,000 for the base bid and $24,684 and $90,000 for the alternative bid. The base bid price is for the reconstruction of Misty Meadows Drive, and the alternative bid is for the reconstruction of South Olson Court. Also, item number 4 is to consider approving a contract amendment to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, Rider 7 Air Quality Plan Grant Program, to extend the expiration date from December 31st, 2017, to August 31st, 2018, to allow for additional time to exhaust the current available funds that are still left in that program. Also, item number 5 is to consider approving Engineering Service Work Order, number 009, with Hibson Todd Corporation for the Water and Wastewater Capital Improvement Plan and the Impact Fee Study. Item number 6 is to consider approving an interlocal animal control service agreement between Hood County and the city of Granbury, which we do every year at this time. Item number 7 is to consider approving a memorandum of understanding between Hood County and the city of Granbury regarding dissemination of public information on behalf of either party, and that's cooperating with our own Bethany, is our PIO, and the PIO person for the county. So with that said, council, you've had an opportunity to look over all these consent agenda items. Are there any items on there you wish to discuss or remove at this time on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Good move, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Gary Couch. Do we have a motion and a second? Are there any more discussion on these items, council? I do want to recognize that the TCEQ and the Clean Air Coalition is present out there. Thank you for coming, and thank you for what you do out there. Hopefully, you can get out there early enough and go downtown and do a little shopping for us. With that said, I'll entertain a motion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda. The first item, item number 8, I'm going to combine that with 8 and 9, but that one don't be together. It is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance, 1739, is number 8, and number 9 is a public hearing and consider approving a request for a plat at 15, of a 15.224 acre tract of the Robert Merritt Survey. Scott, I'm going to call upon you, if you would please, to give us some staff report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request from the applicant, who are the current property owners, Barry and Patty Smith, who are looking at transferring ownership of the property, in particular, Lot 1, for a future retail facility on, you see, proposed Lot 1, fronting US 377. The rezoning request in and of itself is, the rezoning request in and of itself is that area that is bordered in black, just to the south of Lot 1. They're interested in all that area that's between the strange, black encased shape and interim holding all the way to US 377, to make an entire Lot 1 for the future development of an approximate 35,000 square foot grocery store at that particular site. The request is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, which has earmarked that site as commercial. Again, this is the aerial photo of the area to be rezoned. Everything north of that, through the existing property, is currently zoned light commercial, which can accommodate a grocery store. They're just rezoning a little portion of that to the south, and when I show you the site plan, you'll see why here in a minute. This is the site plan that was submitted to support the store, and you can see the little bump out to the south, and the needed bump out for the rezoning to light commercial is to support a document bay for the grocery store. You can see the fire lane and the commercial truck route block area just to the south to accommodate the new proposed Lot 1, Block 1 of the development. Again, this proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Your planning and zoning commission recommended unanimously support of the rezoner request as submitted by the applicant. Additionally, we have preliminary plat requests. Again, this is a conceptual plat that shows how the lots are being laid out. Our subdivision ordinance requires that the parent, the entire parent tract be included in the development. Lot 1, let me get to a larger scale map here. Lot 1, which is where the grocery store is, that particular lot, is fronting US 377, and the back portion of that, you can see this is south of Lot 1, is the proposed Lot 2. There is no defined land use at this time. That particular property will remain in interim holding. If you recall, about maybe three months ago, this was located in the county, and this was voluntarily annexed by Barry and Patty Smith as a part of the plat request in order to get this incorporated into the corporate boundary, and it's currently zoned interim holding. Again, no future plans at this time. It has a kind of a flag lot shape to it. You can see, going back to Lot 1, that has kind of a panhandle shape going to 377, so it'll have a drive proposed with the width of a fire lane in order to get to the back portion of the lot, the southernmost lot, for access. Along with the preliminary plat for Lots 1 and 2, Block 1, we have two variance requests. We have a variance 231 each to not approve 377 to an urban standard facility. That's an urban gutter type facility, urban standard facility. 377 has bar ditches. Currently, we know that there's something long-term on the books to expand 377 from 4 to 6 lanes. As a part of the DRC review process, we asked the surveyor and the engineer to correspond back with, text thought, on any necessary dedications for future right-of-way expansions to go for 4s and planes. They've done that, and they've incorporated that in the plat itself. Secondly, we have a variance to 39 and 45 to not install sewer along the frontage of 377. That's a standard of our subdivision ordinance. Let me get to the right slide here. Okay, so the dash line is the existing location of our sewer line. It doesn't run into the right-of-way of 377. It kind of falls back on the backside of the track line. You can see the dash line is the existing sewer. What they're proposing to do preliminarily is to reroute around the building. The solid line is the new line that'll be incorporated in the proposed engineering plans prior to the final plat, when submitted to our city engineer and PNC and city council at a later date. So your city engineer is recommending supporting the request to not extend the sanitary sewer along 377 frontage as the development in the general area, and supporting this proposed development has sewer available to it. Mayor, that's it in summation. Again, your planning and zoning commission and your city engineer recommend approval of the zoning as submitted, and approval of the variances, and if the variance is approved, the preliminary plat as submitted by the applicant.
With the variance. Thank you, Scott. At this time, I open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on item number 8 and 9 combined. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on either one of these items?
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Chris Biggers with Dunaway Associates. I'm the civil engineer representing the property owners and the end user, really here just to answer any questions you may have, should you have any.
What was your name again?
Chris Biggers.
Chris.
With Dunaway Associates.
Well, if you would, just hang on there a little bit, and we'll get back with the council here and see if they've got any questions for you or Scott. Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, you have any questions or concerns for Scott or Chris? Councilman Parsons?
Tell me a little bit about Nichols Court, Scott. Does it stay in play? It's not getting eaten up into this Lot 1? And then is on the thoroughfare plan, does it go back and tie into the road coming from Saratoga, or?
Nichols Court, based on what we've seen thus far, is a private easement, private access easement. And if I can get the gentleman from Dunaway up here, I know he's done some deep research on that as well, maybe you can confirm that, but we've asked for whatever instrument has conveyed access, or conveyed right of access as part of that easement dedication, referenced on the plat, to make sure it's not a public dedicated road. Again, so far, insofar as we're aware, the private easement for the access to those back homes.
Okay. And then sort of ancillary to that, on the backside of this, will there be an egress that runs back through to the Kroger shopping center, or is that going to be, is there not going to be a secondary, tertiary road that runs parallel to 377?
So in marrying the proposed preliminary plat of Lot 1 and Lot 2 and the site plan to the Kroger plat, you can see a little stub going to the west, and that is tying into an existing easement that connects between, or just south of Starbucks, between the vacant lot. So there is cross-access there. It's a part of the Kroger plat, insofar as cross-access, but we need to work through the details and, in essence, making that a reality before the final plat. But this graphic does show the cross-access from Kroger and a dash line, and their intent to actually have.
Interesting. Do you think that'll be on the final plat?
Yes, solidified that. Now, we'll tell you that when Starbucks developed, in looking at the aerial, yeah, there's a good shot of it. So you can see the cross-access, and unfortunately, you know, a physical barrier in the way is a dumpster that was built in the cross-access, and that we need to somehow address that, reach out to Kroger and find out what the result is there. But hopefully, we can work through that as we go through the engineering review and the final plat process.
Any further comments?
No, sir. I believe he covered it pretty well. That's correct. We are proposing that cross-access. It is an existing easement that we'd be tying into, so there is coordination that will have to still occur to make that happen. That is the plan.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Parsons? Council, any more questions or concerns on this side of these gentlemen?
I've got one.
Councilman Allen?
So the engineering regarding that has not been reviewed in detail by our engineer. So typically, any engineering plans for water, sewer, street drainage comes after the preliminary prior to the final.
Is this appropriate? This next to the front.
This is next to the front. I do want to mention, for council information as well, they did submit a site plan showing a sidewalk parallel to 377 as well, so we do have that.
Council, any more further questions? If not, we'll move to item number 8 here. I'll entertain a motion to consider approving the ordinance, 1739.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Council, any more discussion on this item? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number 8 is approved. Moving down to item number 9, the public hearing considering the approval and the request to preliminary plat, the 15.224 acre tract with the said variances. Is there any more discussion on that one, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat with the said variances.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That item, number 9, is approved. Moving down to item number 10, is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance, 1720. Top check, would you read into that one for us, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. What we have is a request for a special use permit to allow for produce stand in a heavy commercial zone, in an existing heavy commercial zone. Get to the map here, for aerial, do a little better. This is just to the west of the Cowboy, to the east of the Cowboy Marketplace, on the north side of 377. What the applicant wishes to do is to, in looking at the site plan, provide for about five vendor kiosks around the parking area back to the site, showing the purview's cover. So around the parking area, we'll have no more than five kiosks, allowing for produce sales. The property, again, is owned heavy commercial, which does allow for used consignment sales outside. It also allows for daily outdoor display by right. So currently, if there's any tents or any sales of merchandise, necks, et cetera, that's all valid under heavy commercial. Produce, however, is not. Produce is typically a different category because of the sale of foodstuffs and eggs and cut melons, for example, is a health concern. So they want to look at it, make sure that the health inspector's rolled in. City staff looked at their site plan with respect to the number of vendor tents and the available parking on-site, and based on the parking that she has, and it really needs to be striped to be a little more discernible, but with the parking layout that she has on her site plan, she can get five vendor tents on-site. If she goes to six, then she'll be in violation of parking, given the number of vendor tents and the square footage of the building on-site. So that discussion was held at Planning and Zoning Commission, and your planning and zoning commission recommend approval as submitted for the following three conditions: a one-year SUP, a term with an SUP renewal from the date of approval by the city council. The site plan is to be attached to the adoption ordinance, and parking is based on the number of vendors using the farmer's market. In this case, the available parking that she has on-site will support five vendor Mayor would be happy to entertain any questions? Again, this was unanimously recommended for approval by PNC.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearings. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? I think we do have the representatives in the crowd, council, if you've got any questions for those folks. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any more questions or concerns on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Parsons?
Scott, could you define for me what a partially enclosed or open-air structure used for retail sales is going to look like? Is it going to be one of those high-quality blue tents that cost $15.98 at Walmart, or what?
If it's okay with council and the mayor, I'd like to defer to the applicant.
Our proposed recommendation on this is that...
Go ahead and state your name and your address.
I'm Melinda Chambers. Our company is Junk Around. We propose the onsite vending. The special use permit will be used to also sell other goods other than just produce. It will not be a $15.98 tent from Walmart. We are looking at obtaining our health permit. We are seeking what the regulations are to establish the onsite facility for the sale of the produce goods. We've not received that clarification from the city representative yet, but we intend to be in compliance with the city standards.
So you suppose, then, that they're going to be wooden structures with windows that open up for vending, or are they going to be metal roofs, or?
Our establishment...
The only reason I'm inquiring, it is on the entry end of the city, and I was being somewhat facetious in talking about tents, but I can just envision five of those out there, and I don't think that's what I would want on the entrance to the city.
Right. Our establishment will be based on what the city standards are for fire code, and so, again, we're waiting to find out exactly what that standard is. It could be, the city has told us that it could be a pop-up awning type tent, but it has to be within the standards of the fire regulations. Again, I don't know what that is yet. We haven't started to develop the outside yet. It could be a metal standalone with an awning over the top made out of whatever material the city approves for us. That has not been drawn out or established yet. We do have other vendors that would be setting up. They are going to use the awnings, but they are of a higher quality, I think, than what your standard typical type awning is.
Scott, would that have to come back to the council when they go forward with something like this? Is that...
If you issued the permit with the conditions as recommended by the PNC, it would only come back within a year for renewal.
I think that's what we're, Councilman Parsons, is going with this, you know? If we approve this, we want to make sure that we're not approving a weekend, or just a day-to-day, or just a standalone tent that's flopping around out there in the entryway to the...
Right, and we fully understand that. I think I placed a call again this afternoon to Jim Cook, I believe that's his name, asking for the regulations. The owner of the facility, Teresa Sims, has also reached out to the city to assist us with getting clarification on that. We have been working with the city probably for the last three to four weeks to obtain that clarification, and we don't have that yet, so...
I'm going to let Chris Kaufman talk a little bit back, because he has a little background on what you're going to be expected to hear.
You know, what I saw Saturday were those tents like we see for vendors on the square.
Right.
Is that what you envision moving forward?
Not for our produce stand, or that type of sale, outdoor food vending or produce, no.
So I just need some clarification, Scott, on, we're authorizing a special use permit, or proposing to, a special use permit for five booths for produce? Is there more room on that land to have all these other tents and things also in addition to that, or what are we doing?
So the SUP is for produce.
Right.
Again, they can have vendors for consignment, used consignment sales, as well as outdoor display. To me, each one of the...
By right.
By right. Each one of those tents has a certain parking demand.
Okay.
So I would suspect that this is a produce or a combination of, say, consignment sales that generate parking.
Parking that you've got diagrammed here is only good enough for the existing building and five new tents.
And five tents, yeah.
Okay. Now then, along the tent construction, I don't know how big they are, and everything is variable there, but if it's a big tent, like a circus tent or something like that, there's certainly fire retardant type materials that have to be utilized and things like that, so Jim will have to work with you on that.
Right.
Depending on how big you want to build.
Right, and I think right now, our standard awning sizes that's been used has been like a 10 by 12, something like that, or a 10 by 10. Again, ours, we do have the agreement for, from the neighbor, the barber shop, pardon me, I can't recall his name, that we can use his facility as well on weekends for parking. I believe he closes at noon, and he has parking in the front and back, but we have not advanced that. Also, we have early plans to also speak with Cowboy Market to assist us in utilizing their parking lot, too, possibly, but we have not reached that point yet, so...
Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
Can we trust that the tents will be consistent?
Yes, yes. We have made it clear to any vendor interested in vending with us that we are not a flea market nor a garage sale, and we are particular in what we have allowed them to put up outside. That's not what our purpose is or intent.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Off the one, it's glad to see a produce market in Granbury. In that business, my wife and I first got married 100 years ago. We really enjoy it every time I find somebody set up inside the road. Last one was down on 167. I'm glad you're here. We'll be here next week. The tent looks good. He says the city don't run the lot. And it's not often we have our inspector who's done their job.
Right.
But I agree with Campsport, you know? We don't want coming into Granbury a little like Kent City either, you know? Is this going to be year-round, every day, or weekend? What's your plan?
No, our intent is, my sister and I have this startup, and we both work full-time. So our intent is to have it on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We have someone that will work for us on Friday. Any produce market or items such as that would not be operated on Friday. It would be under the care and control of my sister and I, and we will be there on Saturday and Sunday to operate it.
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Right now.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Council, any more questions for the applicant or Scott?
Scott, as a part of the SUP, we could have some requirements about what and how the buildings might look, or not?
It's really up to council. PNC did not ask for it, but with the SUP, you certainly have that latitude to, if you want to, based on this discussions, you can prove it as submitted, or if you want to see what the tents look like, and give her a couple of more weeks to work with city staff to see examples, then you can table this and delay it two weeks for photographs or images of what these tents would look like. And you can also condition that once that example of what the tents or the canopies will look like, that they be, condition that they be all similar in color and material.
If you did that, could you get it back the next council?
Yes, so what we could do is if you want to table it, you just, in your motion to table it, you say it's tabled until the next council meeting, specify the time, date, address, so we don't have to advertise it again. It's just suspended until that date.
Produce is the short time there, so, I mean, I'm all for it if we get on next council. It's going to be 30 days from now, I'm going to get...
It'll be the first two days of next month. But it's really council's discretion.
I do believe that they're trying to work towards an opening date. Am I correcting that?
Yes, we are.
What date are you trying to be open by?
Actually, this weekend.
This weekend?
Now, we will not be selling produce this weekend. We have not established that. You know, our goal is not only just to sell produce, but also in the fall, bring in a fall market where we have pumpkins for the community, possibly during the holiday season. possibly during the holiday season, do a Christmas market, possibly vendor-owned Christmas trees, or bring in a vendor for the Christmas trees, and set it up for a Christmas market as well. Something that we know the city has during special events, but not typically on an every weekend event, so.
It's a colorful site. I've got to admit, the building looks nice. Pretty colorful when you come into town.
Yes. We've had, you know, a number of people stop in and acknowledge where we're at today and what we've done so far, and excited about the thought of having the fruits and vegetables available. And then when we talk about the fall market and the Christmas market, they seem to get much more excited, so. We're anxious to establish this, and we want to do it within the city's standards and requirements. And I think we both have our own personal standards too, that we don't want it to look like a flea market or a garage sale site.
Counsel, any more questions or concerns for-
I have a question for the manager. How far out is the city on describing for them what those tents and things will look like? Do you know?
There are no standards other than fire code issues that we would have to address.
We have nothing on that.
And that was based on the dimension and the top materials that they use.
Mayor. I've got a couple of questions as well. I think most of them were answered. I was curious as to when you wanted to get started, and that's this weekend. I was curious as to when you wanted to run these markets and whether it was just going to be in the summer because the produce season is almost over for most farmers markets. So it's good to hear that you're going to do fall and perhaps Christmas as well. Is there anything that you're modeling after that we could perhaps get a vision of what this is going to look like? What kind of tenting and what you're planning to bring in as far as your vendors and things like that? Have you already got that all lined up? Because I know if you're trying to get it open this weekend, you probably know what kind of vendors and-
Yes, we have, we're actually approximately ninety percent vendied out on the inside of this facility. We have individuals selling handmade quilts. My sister and I do a number of different crafts, refurbished furnitures, jewelry. I have a vendor that makes handmade stuffed animals. I have a vendor that does etched glassware. I have a vendor that does refurbished denim clothing, and she's an artist, and so she does design work on her clothing. We have a vendor that sisters, one sells handmade soy products for bath, and the other sells golf gloves. So we have a wide variety of items that we will vend. The external site for vending, of course, the produce, farmer's market, whatever we may call it. We've had people from Acton in the farmer's market that have shown interest. One family, it's a grandmother and her granddaughter or daughter now, they do sell eggs, and we've talked about that. And we haven't decided if we're going to do that yet or not. I have a vendor that sells boots and purses, recycled boots and purses. I have another vendor that actually rented out an entire room, and they do handmade baby clothing and quilts and blankets and handmade coasters and a variety of things. We've been very selective of who we have interviewed for these booths. Again, we've had people come in that have asked to do their recycled children's clothing and stuff, and we have said no. So we've had to turn vendors away because that's not our standard. And we recognize that the summer months are almost over. Some of these goals are short-term and long-term goals for us, and we haven't, we've talked to vendors or produce vendors, recognizing it may not be this summer that we're able to do that because we have to be compliant with the city standards. And we want to do that first before we push forward with making commitment with a produce vendor. I have talked to a couple of farmers for the pumpkins and planned to schedule to go meet with them and understand their pricing, their growing season, their product before we bring that in as well, so. And I'm still seeking a vendor for the Christmas trees. I have a number of people I have contacted to try to network with, but I haven't been successful in that yet, so. Those may not happen this year, but, you know, short-term, if we're successful in getting our permit, then we will do everything we can to make that happen. Otherwise, we know it will be, it will be next year.
Mr. Mayor, I have another couple of questions for Scott here. Scott, if she gets, she would have to have agreements that we would look at if she was to expand this S U P, right? If she was to go beyond the five booths, she'd have to come back to council and redo the S U P?
Well, the way, get back to the condition, so we tried to fashion the condition where it's a little more user and user-friendly. Parking is based on the number of vendors using the farmer's market, really restricted to the number of vendors in available parking. Based on those requirements, the site would allow for five vendors and retail use of the parking building on site. Site plan shows seventeen parking spaces. If additional parking is acquired by a shared parking agreement with another adjacent business, vendors could be added if three additional spaces are required per vendor. So rather than restrict her to the number of vendor booths, the note was fashioned that if she had acquired the additional parking, that it would be more user-friendly throughout the term of the S U P without having to come back through council. It was purposely fashioned that way. That way, we don't have to come back through a month and a half public hearing process. Now, we'll say this on parking, parking through a shared agreement can only be granted if that adjoining property owner has the space to give. So going back to the aerial photography, for example, the person to the east, looks like it has minimal parking spaces based on the building footprint. In essence, they can't grant parking that they don't have in surplus beyond the use that they need to support themselves, even on hours. Cowboy Marketplace to the west may be a different story. We can look at their building footprint. So that's the kind of dynamic we've looked at. So to answer your question more directly, the S U P is fashioned with a condition as presented to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission to expand, to allow for the expansion of the number of vendors on site based on valid parking that's been vetted by staff.
So if she brings you three spaces available, either at the barber shop over there, then you can add one vendor?
If in the event we look at-
Does she have to come to the city, or is that just by?
It would be just administratively. So if Cowboy Marketplace says, oh, we got six more spaces, for example, beyond what's needed to support our building footprint, and they get into a joint-use parking agreement and they provide that, then it would prompt the consideration of two more vendor tents.
And-
But they would have to be appropriately signed too, like these, you know, some directional arrows that they're kind of tied to these joints.
And her parking lot as is meets standards, or are they going to have to pave that, or what?
It appears to meet the hard surface standard, but it would be nice to have it striped and properly delineated because it just, you know, for its eye glance, those parking spaces aren't properly delineated.
And would the council be prevented from changing the S U P to six months, or anything like that?
At council's discretion.
Mr. Mayor, if no one else has any further questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Councilman Parsons, anybody else have any questions or concerns? If not, Councilman Parsons, you got a motion?
Mr. Mayor, based on the comments of the applicant and based on some assurance that it's going to have a good look to it, I recommend that we approve the S U P as presented by Planning and Zoning.
With the following conditions?
With the planning and zoning conditions, yes.
So we have a motion to approve the recommended, with the said conditions here. So we have a-
Second, Mayor.
And we have a second by Councilman Allen. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this item, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Joseph and Pamela Elliott to replat lots sixteen, one sixty-six and one sixty-six of Catalina Bay. Scott, could I have you read into that fact report, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, council. What we have is a replat request to combine two lots of record into one lot of record. This is in Catalina Bay two or the island. You can see the aerial photography of the two lots. One's being built on, and one's currently vacant. The replat application here, you can see the reported two lots that are bounded in a Monocle line. What's being requested again is to vacate and abandon that common lot line and just combine those two recorded lots into one lot of record. As a part of that, we have two parallel five-foot easements that are being abandoned and vacated. As typical with our replat process, we send, we cast out notices to franchise agencies to make sure they don't have any infrastructure interest in those five-foot easements down the property line. We give them fourteen days to respond. They haven't responded. If they have any interest in their Planning and Zoning Commission, looked at the application and recommended conditional denial, the two conditions being, one, that sewer line to the vacated lot needs to be capped, and secondly, the neighborhood sidewalk needs to be continued by installing the sidewalk across the vacant lot. Once these two issues are inspected and accepted by city staff, then the replat could be filed for record at Hood County. Go back to the aerial, so you can see that as a part of the building process, the builder installs the sidewalk along the recorded track line or the lot line. You can see if we join this into one recorded lot, then that sidewalk will never be built along that front edge, so. We want to make sure that we have pedestrian access through that walkway before that recorded lot's recorded and filed for record. Mayor, would you be happy to entertain any questions?
Thank you, Scott. Hey, Scott, you're fading in and out on your mic. I know Carlos is probably going to jump on you for that. I think the city manager's got a question on that before you open up the public hearing.
Scott, remind me why this can't be approved administratively? And I think that this is a good example of why something should be able to be approved administratively. Other than the two requirements that you specified, I mean, most city codes allow that.
You know, I'm not sure. There's no variances tied to this.
I mean, if our ordinance is required, I understand that, but maybe we need to look at that.
And I don't know if it's the conditional denial.
We'll run with it the way you got it, but I just think we should address that in the future. Somebody owns two lots and they want it consolidated into one.
We'll talk about it at D R C. Provided that, yeah, provided typically that they have-
There's no utilities involved, yeah.
No utilities. The only thing that I can think of is the sidewalk, the missing sidewalk, but there's no variance request there. They're willing to do it, so.
You've got a sewer water line. It's already there.
It's there.
Yeah, it's already there. I mean, if you had to put it there, I could see why you would do it.
Yeah.
That's a valid point. But administratively, I mean, they could actually set the, set any condition as far as that goes, I mean, as far as that. Set the same conditions.
We got it queued up for y'all tonight.
Well, okay.
Mayor, can I say something?
Councilman Allen, yeah.
Thank you. I was asked tonight if I owned this property, and I told the individual, no. I didn't know if I owned any property around it, and I told the individual, no. I don't own any land there. It is kind of, and I ran up to Scott real quick, and I said, this isn't the island in it. And he said, yeah, and it's Catalina two, I believe, face two. And I live in Catalina one, but I don't own any property. If the lawyer tells me I don't need to vote on this, I'll be happy to step out, step down, and get out, but.
I think you're okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen, I think you're okay.
And the homeowner association issues aren't any of our issue, right?
Those are issues between the property owner and the homeowners association.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Is anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Is there a representative out there in the public? Okay, so we do have a representative. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more questions or concern on this item?
Mr. Mayor, the sewer cap and the other item there is that homeowner's expense. The sidewalk and the cap is a-
Those are the two conditions, yes.
And again, this is conditional denial.
And you say neither one of those have been addressed at this point, right?
Neither one have been addressed.
Counsel, any more discussion on this one? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
The motion being?
Oh, to approve the request from Joseph and Pamela Elliott to replat lots one sixty-six and one sixty-seven Catalina Bay two. Want me to read all of that, Mayor?
With the said condition? No, you don't have to read it.
Conditional denial.
With the conditional denial?
With the conditional denial. As presented. You're welcome.
Thank you. So we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is approved to be, recommends a conditional denial as presented. Our next item is item number twelve, which is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance seventeen forty-one. Scott, would you read into that one, please, for me?
Absolutely, Mayor. Approximately four to six months ago, we had a person looking at the Grandberry Market for a foster home. And his particular proposal was contingent upon state support, which never materialized. His application was not successful, but nonetheless, when we looked at our zoning ordinance, we saw that we had no mission in our zoning ordinance. We didn't have a particular category for foster homes. And as he was going through the process, kicking the tires here in the Grandberry Market, we knew that we had to make an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for the consideration of foster homes. So what we did was we looked at other model ordinances throughout the Metroplex as well as draw upon the state statute regarding the definition of foster homes. And what we found was there are three categories of foster-type home facilities. We have a foster family home, which, and they're kind of graduated based on the intensity as defined by state law. A foster family home is a childcare facility that provides care for not more than six children for twenty-four hours a day. We go on to the next category under state statute. Foster group home is a childcare facility that provides care for seven to twelve kids, children for twenty-four hours a day. Then we have a general residential operation, a childcare facility that provides care for more than twelve children for twenty-four hours a day, including the children's home halfway house, residential treatment centers, emergency shelters, and therapeutic camps. The gentleman that was looking at the Grandberry Market was looking at the latter of these three categories, the more commercial-type operation. In essence, he was looking at housing probably about fifteen to seventeen children at a commercial site. So to take a step back and looking at our ordinance, we didn't have any of those categories, not any one of those three that were defined in state code. So we've been working with the Planning and Zoning Commission over the course of the last three months or so to actually find some of these definitions and bring a proposal to amend the ordinance. We think the definitions, by and large, comport with the definitions of the state law. The real dialogue ensued at the Planning and Zoning Commission was where to catalog them in our land use matrix and what the parking requirements were. So going back to the least intense, foster family homes, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommending, permitted by riot across the board, with the exception of industrial. By and large, these are the type of homes that are single-family homes, where they have two, three, or four foster kids. And looking at other cities' ordinances, and those ordinance are- And in looking at other cities' ordinances, and those ordinances are included in your agenda packet for reference as well, most cities around the metroplex catalog them, one to six, and single-family residential by right. Foster group home, again, this is the seven to 12 category, seven to 12 children. Children is a defined term in state statute. It's 18 years and younger. What we found is, they're either, they're either a mix of permitted by right and residential or by and large SUP. They wanna look at it case by case, and then permitted by right, non-residential or commercial. So, this is really where the discussion picked up at the Planning and Zoning Commission, whether or not to go with an SUP or allow it by right. Ultimately, what's being presented to you by your Planning and Zoning Commission is specific use permit. The nature of the discussion was, a lot of these homes and single-family residential are three and four bedroom, and to think that there's gonna be a family unit and seven, eight, nine kids is kinda impractical. If there is, they don't want to prohibit it, they just wanna see it case by case. And they also wanna see kinda some of the parking to support that, especially if there's only two parking spaces per lot. Lastly, general residential operation, you can see it's prohibited. Those are the Xs and residential type, land uses, and SUPs and non-residential. So, they wanna see a site plan with how they're managing parking, and they wanna review it on a case-by-case basis. Again, the nature of their discussion for the SUPs rather than by right, non-residential, I'll try to paraphrase this as best I can from the P&amp;Z meeting. They recognize that Grandberry is a very long-jolene city, you know, or very stripped out along 377, and we have commercial frontage, and beyond that, you start getting into residential applications very quickly. So, if there's a commercial land use and it backs up against residential, and there's going to be a children's home or residential treatment center, they wanna be able to look at it case by case to make sure that there's compatibility and adjacency issues that are met. And that can be buffering. With SUPs, you can have buffering and fencing and all that good stuff, restriction of height. So, those are the definitions. Those are the land use matrix proposals from P&amp;Z. Migrate over to supplemental standards. Again, these are part of your Article Four definitions or land use matrix requirements. So, first, a detailed site plan accorded with Section 11 will be required as a part of the application, only with general residential operations, that's the more commercial of the ones that were earmarked for non-residential with SUPs. Outdoor lighting, including parking lot lighting, shall be directed away from property zone or developed for residential use in the adjacency issue. And a copy of the state certification of licensing and registration is described in Chapter 42, 052 of the Texas Human Resource Code. That's where these definitions are, must be provided to the city. Again, that's just for the commercial. So, when you get into the one to six residential operations by right, the P&amp;Z is recommending that's overly intrusive, the city doesn't need you to get involved, but when you get into more commercial applications, we wanna tie the SUP with the maintenance of the license with the state to operate that facility. Lastly, parking. And these are comparative cities that we have as a part of your application as well. They were all over the board, to say the least. There was no consistency whatsoever. A lot of them use residential-type applications and others use commercial applications and tie them to residential. I think your Planning and Zoning Commission really wrestled with it, but what they tried to do is find some common ground. So, here's what's being proposed to you. For foster family home, two per unit. Again, that's what's required currently for residential. Additional requirements, none. So, there's no additional parking for by right, single-family residential, one to six kids. No additional parking. Foster group home, two per unit, which is already required, single-family residential, one for every three residents. So, once you go beyond the seven, so six, seven, and eight, that's the additional parking space. And then, again, they're looking at this, and they had that discussion about single-family house, number of bedrooms, seven kids, the practicality that you're gonna have, that kind of occupation. But if they do, they wanna see a site plan where they're getting their additional parking from. And lastly, general residential operation, one for every three residents, one for each employee. So, if we have a commercial site, a site plan, it's, one space for every three residents and one for each employee that operates the facility. So, if they have two employees and, say, 12 residents, that will be 12 residents or four for the residents and an additional two for the employees there. So, those are the recommendations coming from you from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, I can tell you the parking was really, it was a head-scratcher. They were looking at the other model city ordinances and, you know, you can see, for example, Tyler used, we kinda fell in line more with Tyler using the state definitions of the less than six and more than six. But you can see a lot of them under parking requirements, two spaces per dwelling unit plus two additional off-street spaces for Irving. Fort Worth is really draconian, one space per bedroom plus one space for 250 square foot of common area.
Uh, Mayor?
Scott, is this the same, I guess, refresh my memory, is this the same people that wanted or had some interest in the old Y?
The old, I'm sorry?
The old YMCA?
No, ma'am. This is another building that's on, I'm trying to think, District...
South Side Drive?
South Side Drive, yeah. It's a vacant, kind of reddish-bread building with available parking on site.
Where CPS used to be.
Oh, okay.
But they, that felt true. But this illuminated the need that they've been working on a long time. I might just add that the parking in the SUPs were kinda on my radar as far as being onerous, because, you know, originally, I would like to see, you know, someone that wanted to put in a facility, they're not institutions, they're homes that where they bring in folks to, where they're looking at seventeen kids, it's more of a facility where they integrate them into the local public schools, and these kids are victims of circumstances. And they're not gonna be driving, but then again, we think about the repurposing of the building someday if they build it, and there may be a need for something different. So, I think the P&amp;Z has put together a good package for y'all, and it's well-balanced. And the guys that are putting in those larger facilities are so used to public hearings and having to go through the process with the public to be accepted, I think that it's a palatable solution for the whole thing. We were just caught flat-footed with no provisions at all when we were trying to address the situation.
And that's not to say if they have something unique to their particular operation, they can't go to the ZDA and request relaxation, provided that they, again, one of the concerns that Chris mentioned and P&amp;Z kinda reiterated is the repurposing of the building. What happens if it vacates and a commercial use goes there and there's not adequate parking?
Scott, well...
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Scott, on the state law, you had some reference to that. Did we go back and look and see what their delineation was? I know in some of the other homes, there's a delineation between the number of kiddos having to be in homes and stuff like that. Is six their cutoff, or do they have a lower cutoff?
It is. So, if you actually go in your staff report, we use the exact same terminology, foster family home, one to six. Foster group home, seven to 12. So, it follows state statute pretty much verbatim.
And so, six kiddos can be in a two-bedroom home?
Yes.
And that's by state law, too, isn't it?
Yeah, by state. There was actually three categories, I think, or maybe there's more, that actually followed the state law.
They've kinda got a preemption caveat to that family home situation, where the city can't regulate it beyond the fact that it's single-family as well. They're trying to encourage that kind of foster care.
I think you're exactly right. I mean, how many, how many are gonna be licensed drivers? I mean, I got, I got neighbors who got four kids, and then all their friends come over and there's cars everywhere, you know, but what? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. We haven't done that yet. Is anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Not opposed to the public hearing. Council, any more questions or concerns to Scott on these definitions or amendments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said ordinance changes that P&amp;Z has presented to us. I have a motion by Councilman Couch?
Second.
I have a second, but Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on these items? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those changes are approved.
Same song, second verse now.
That's right. Going on to another one here.
Assisted living.
Yeah. So, our next item, item number 13, is a public hearing and consider adopting another ordinance, 1742, approving the request of the city of Grandberry to amend those ordinance 01819. Scott, if you would, please read into that for me, please.
Be happy to, Mayor, Council. What we have is another omitted land use definition, and it's for assisted living facilities. Our ordinance allows for independent living, or considers independent living has that definition. It allows for convalescent homes or nursing homes, but there's a category, again, in state statute that's called assisted living. Independent living is without any assisted care or medical care. Convalescent homes provides nursing care. Assisted living provides care, but without the professional medical aspect. So, it's more daily living care, help you with your laundry, help you with your housekeeping chores, et cetera. And so, we had a gentleman that's, again, kicking tires at the market here in Grandberry and wanted to look at an assisted living facility. We sat down with our zoning ordinance and asked him to, out of the two categories we had, independent or convalescent care, which one he fell in, and he goes, "Well, I'm neither." So, we had to go to his website, and again, we had to dive off into the state statute, and again, by and large, we had a hole in our zoning ordinance, which we hopefully quickly remedied in order to get this facility here. So, this is the addition of the assisted living facilities in our zoning ordinance. Again, we patterned the definition of assisted living facilities after the state statute. We looked at model ordinances. Again, those model ordinances are included in your agenda packet for reference. Assisted living is a group of living facility that provides health and living services for a person who, because of age, illness, or infirmity, cannot live independently, but do not require continuous nursing care. This type of facility provides personal care services as defined by the state of Texas. Again, bootstrapping the state statute. Assisted living is considered to be an intermediate level of care between retirement home, i.e. independent living and convalescent nursing home, continuous care. So, that will be the definition of Article 12. What's being proposed insofar as an amendment to Article Four, your land use matrix, is to prohibit those in residential, include those in townhome, multifamily, business light, heavy, commercial, and CBD. Again, referencing those model ordinances and having that dialogue with P&amp;Z, that's where they wanted these facilities. They perceived these to be as more commercial supplemental standard regarding outdoor lighting. Again, there's no SUPs here, so we're not gonna have a site plan. But typically, if they're going to rezone and replat property, as in the case of what's being presented by this gentleman, will typically get a building footprint plan, site plan, and a replat showing how they're sustaining the lot through the infrastructure. For reference, these are the model ordinances. Again, you can see, by and large, commercial is where they're allowed in most cities. Cleveland, townhome, and multifamily by right and all commercial, allowed retail in commercial districts, commercial in industrial Fort Worth. So, most of the cities, they restricted in the commercial. About 25% of them allowed them in multifamily. We found that that was reasonable to allow them in multifamily as well, because when these develop, at least looking at this gentleman's site plan, they're developing as kind of a site design as multifamily, a single lot, or maybe an aggregate of lots with a number of units on a lot. Parking, one for three beds, an additional space per 300 square foot of the office administrative employee areas. We looked back at parking of other competitive ordinance as well. I think the P&amp;Z relaxed the parking requirements for assisted living facilities as opposed to comparison with the parking requirements for the other cities that they vetted their proposal against. You can see, for example, one space per bed in Arlington, plus one for 100 square foot of common area. That's pretty, pretty heavy-handed compared to what's coming from P&amp;Z. They want one for three per bed. They didn't think that these even independent living facilities or assisted living facilities would have that kind of parking or trip generation or car generation from their client. The one additional space per 300 square foot of office administrative area does not include common area inside the building. So, if there's a common area where they play, for example, peanut butter, or cars, or bridge, or whatever the case may be, that would not be counted for parking space, because your staff and your P&amp;Z felt that would be double-dipping. We're already accounting for the number of spaces per room, and they're gonna be operating in the common area. But what's generating the parking spaces is the office administrative warehouse area supported by the employees there. Mayor, that's it in a nutshell. I can tell you, just by working with the prospective individual who's looking at investing into the Grandberry community, we've compared the parking schedule and the land use matrix of where they're located and what they're, at least conceptually presenting as a concept plan, and it meets their requirements. So, the P&amp;Z was comfortable with that.
And they have facilities in other communities, I guess, and so they're aware of it.
They're aware.
Good. Well, good, I mean, they're the experts. Yeah.
And although 50 units are other facilities in other communities, not one resident drops. So, it's really a niche market. People go there that aren't ready for the nursing home, but they're not good enough to live in in a neighborhood.
Good. Well, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody in the public need to, wish to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns to Scott on these definitions or changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendments with the following exceptions to the use table as presented by the staff, and the staff has proposed that the assisted living be allowed by the right in the townhome district, and P&amp;Z added that a specific use permit be required.
Don't move.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on this item? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number 13 is approved, as said. Next, we're gonna move into our city manager information and operations report, and we always like to hear from Mr. Kaufman on what's going on in the, in the city's world here, city's world here. He's also got a PowerPoint for us tonight, so, Chris, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
This'll keep me on track and get us out of here as quick as possible.
I'm all about that.
As y'all are aware, we're in the middle of our downtown project, and I wanted you to see that the area in red and green have been combined into one last phase with an attempt of speeding this thing up about three weeks. We did learn today that we're gonna need to replace the water line all the way back to, is that Bluff Street? What, Brazza Street behind the Opera House on the, on Crockett? So, that's a new, a new change that we just discovered today by doing the... So, that's a new, a new change that we just discovered today by doing the repairs there at that intersection. So, old infrastructure, and we didn't plan on a replacement that far back, but we're kind of an emergency situation, and we're moving forward to do that. Should be through with that water line this week. And also, just kind of show you, there's some pictures. Take a look at the one on the far left. It kind of illustrates the turn radius as it was under construction. And then on the far right, it shows the final appearance of the intersection after construction. And I want you to notice that, you can't really see there, but the turn radius is, is experiencing some difficulty. I think the next slide will explain it some more. There's just some pictures of what's going on. Phases three and four are already, again, they've already milled the asphalt off of the street on Pearl Street. They're going to be removing and have been removing existing concrete sidewalks, curb and gutter, and then they'll get it all poured back as quick as possible. I will note that it's a mess. And here's a problem that happened just this last week. As you can see, that tire tread going over that curb has caused that cold joint to fall off of that curb that was poured for that ADA ramp. And we brought the engineer back, had a meeting with them last Wednesday, and reviewed this and some other areas just like it, where people are learning to travel across around that turn. And what we envision, we've, he's redrawn the diagram for us in that picture. I know it's hard to see on this little font. But basically, that pie-shaped piece of concrete, when we get, we're designing the other street intersections not to have those. And so, Pearl, at Crockett, and Houston, there will, the, the turn radius will have a solid curve there without a curb. And then that ADA ramp will go all the way around that curve as well. And we're doing that because of this, and, and just the turn radius, people aren't able to manipulate that as smooth as we'd like for them to be able to. The only problem that I've got with this change is, the way it's designed was to enhance pedestrian safety to the max. As you can see, there's, that brick paver goes way past that, that ADA ramp, and pedestrians could utilize that area, even ADA, if we didn't have that curb there. But what's going to happen, we're, we're kind of compromising our safety here a little bit for the, for the, because of the tight turns. And so, what we're going to do is do those on, on Pearl Street, see how they look, and then when we come back to redo Bridge Street where that water leak is, where the pavement is failing, look at doing that same type turn that we're doing on Pearl Street back on this intersection. So, that kind of gives you an idea. Down in the bottom-left corner there, you can see the highlighted blue area. That's going to be removed, and it'll just be the solid sloped curve up to the landing area. So, foundation supports for the awnings on Houston Street are being reconstructed to the new sidewalk grades. The new street lighting on Bridge Street, Crockett Street, Houston Street are now energized. The intersections of Pearl Street, Houston Street, Pearl Street, Crockett Street are being reconstructed. Completion of the new water system is continuing in those intersections. So, we're making good progress. We do intend on being complete with this in the middle of September to the, October first is our firm deadline, but we're thinking middle of September, hopefully. So, again, there's the revised turn radiuses. I think you can see the, the curve on the right side where the slope is going to go all the way. And then you can see with the little blue line where they're taking out that pie-shaped piece of concrete. So, I hope that helps. Move on to the water treatment plant. These are some elevations. Think we're going to have a very good-looking facility once we get it built, and excited about the progress that they've made. Whoops, went the wrong way. These are just some aerial pictures that Amber Ross took for us with her drone service that they have. And they've made a lot of progress. You can see the RO equipment installed in, in the facility and generator out back. And I would like to offer, take any of y'all on a personal tour anytime you're available, and would like to go look. But this is a huge undertaking, and we're making good timing on it. I've been assured that we will have water coming out of this facility on October one, over and over again, because I keep asking. And obviously, that's very high importance to us. They plan on putting the decant line in within the next four weeks, if I'm not mistaken. Am I speaking truth back there, guys? Nothing's changed since we talked. The decant line will be the outflow back to the lake for the, for the desolated water that is a byproduct of that. There you can see the guys putting in a new sewer line from the plant to the, main, I guess, and then the eighteen-inch water line has been backfilled and installed already. And you can see that tank, we've rehabilitated it. That was needed, and that's done, and we are currently using that tank again. And the water treatment plant that we have, as good as it is, is, we're running three shifts a day, and we're producing about three hundred thousand gallons of water per day out of that. And, and obviously, we're blending it with the other water that we get, and from SWAT's plant and from our well system. So, trying to eliminate as many gallons that we can to have to keep combining from the SWAT's plant. Obviously, the water distribution project is underway in full swing, because we need these pipes, a major part of these pipes installed before we can distribute the water that that plant's going to produce on October first. There's an aerial overview, and obviously, we're working on the stuff to the right of the center of that map as a priority. The scout camp pump station and distribution improvements are currently underway. They've bored under the highways in a couple of places. They've, I don't know how many feet of pipe they've laid, but it's pretty extensive. They've still got quite a bit to go. It's twenty-one hundred, twenty-one thousand five hundred feet of sixteen-inch pipe that we're supposed to be putting in out there, so that's, that's a lot of pipe. And you can see blue pipe laying around everywhere you drive just about. On the scout camp itself, we're building a new pump station, and the slab's already been poured for that. Obviously, you can see that million-gallon tank sitting behind that tree there in the right-hand corner. And we're going to continue to utilize that as we pump the water from the plant to that tank, and then distribute it further east. Well, keep going backwards on me. It's lost its directional ability here. Isn't that crazy? Going backwards instead of forwards.
Hit the back button.
I'm, I'm going down. See if you can operate it. There you go. We also have a twenty-inch line that we're going to take to the Knox One tank, which is on Highway fifty-one. We are going to, you go to the next slide. There's the Knox tank, you can see it, and right of it has been cleared. And that is a, a lower priority than the stuff that we looked at previously, but we are moving forward with that, next slide. This pipeline's going to help with the hospital distribution improvements. We've got some fire hydrants over there that are low flow that need to be addressed as quick as possible, and so that's going to happen soon. Go ahead to the next one. The bridge crossing, we decided to sink the water line instead of attach it to the bridge. We know that Tech Todd's going to be doing construction on that bridge, so we think it'd be more efficient to go ahead and do a project to actually sink that line, and so it'll be secured down below. We have a couple sewer lines buried across the lake, too, so it's not a new concept here, so. Next slide. As you are aware, we're building a elevated storage tank at Meander, and some of that work has begun, and you can see that. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-gallon elevated storage tank that's going to address the distribution pressure problems and maintain adequate water supply for that area. And we have an agreement with Aquitex for emergency water in the event they need it for a fire or malfunction for vent water. And so, that capacity has to be put into the calculations of what we do in that area, so this is addressing all that. And we're going to be up, up to speed with TCQ on all of our regulations. Next slide. Wanted to give you a little report on code enforcement. Currently, we've got two employees that, that do violation letters, but mainly with all the rain and stuff, we've got a lot of tall grass that keeps them busy. But these two-hundred-and-seventy-six letters that we've sent out so far this year are, are certified letters. They cost about six dollars just for the postage, much less the time it takes to write them and look up the address according to the law, where you're supposed to send it. And so, it takes a little time to do that. We've had eighty-one complaints resolved by voluntary compliance, which is good. I'd like to see two-hundred-and-seventy-six voluntary compliance, but unfortunately, we have to, to cope and work with people pretty intense. Number inspections to date for code enforcement, twenty-eight-hundred-and-fifteen for the year, with a thousand-seventy-one follow-ups. So, our code enforcement staff is extremely busy and stretched just about as far as they can go. However, we've only issued three tickets. Active lanes, we file lanes and people pay them, so for mowing of properties and mitigating hazardous and nuisance issues. So, illegal parking, we've actually focused on Kroger, the old Kroger store. Y'all remember, it was beginning to look like a used car lot, and starting last fall, we really worked with Kroger, and they've been a good neighbor and have, we don't know how many they've towed, but they've authorized us to tow for them on their behalf, and we've towed nine vehicles from over there. And one, one of, one of those, the word gets out, you know, and they learn that they can't park their car there for sale. But it is a violation for people to park there, and it's posted. They can't be putting their cars up for sale, both. Had a motorcycle there one day, anyway. We, we have had, I've added to this report quite a bit. There were names of businesses that we had to close for health and fire violations, but I did remove that for privacy. They've come into compliance, and they're active again. But we do have some issues where, when we do health inspections, we, we see unsafe conditions in restaurants and stuff, and we're having to deal with that. Most of the time, we can get compliance without having to shut them down, but every now and then, we have to do that. Then we have multiple violations with some of our folks, currently, these are current right now. High weeds and grass, junk vehicle, unclear premise, the owner's deceased, so we're dealing with an estate, and that, you know, that takes some time to work through those things. So, if you see something, we, we enforce these things basically on a reactive basis. We don't have enough staff to drive around and just look for, for problems. Besides all that, I don't think your phone would stop ringing if we did that. And so, we, we really react with complaints, and as we stumble into it, we have to deal with it. But if you see something that you would like to have enforced, you see a problem, staff, audience, please let us know. We're here to serve and to make sure that our community looks good and is safe, and we don't have a bunch of vermin running around in the tall grass and mosquitoes and what have you. Substandard structures and unclean premises, we've got one property like that. Several properties on, on that street with high weeds and grass, unclean premises, junk vehicles, parking trailers, recreational vehicles on residence. All those things are against code enforcement, or code guidelines, and so we have to do that. And just note that it was the third wettest June on record, and it's rained almost every seven days or closer, which has made maintaining properties extremely difficult for the property owners. You know, they try to get it mowed, and it rains, and then it's muddy, and they've got to let it dry. So, we've had some of that, and the city even had some of that right before the, before the July holiday. We had a, a lot that needed to be mowed, but we couldn't get in there, because we would have rutted it up, spent the next week fixing it. So, we let it dry a little bit, and we got it mowed on about the seventh of July, and everybody was happy again. The, the park expansion opportunity, as many of y'all have seen, we're working with an architect that's going to be here on August third to walk us through some ideas on, on probable opinion of costs like we talked about. I wanted y'all to just be aware that we're moving forward with that, and we'll get a report to you as soon as we get something from them. And I believe that's my last, well, the dam, the storm damage, be my last five, and not be one more. But we did have some storm on Fourth of July. Remember, the vendors on the square experienced some high winds and ruined some of their tents and what have you. And we, we experienced some of those with this storage shed, removed that. It blew that shed over, the roof of that shed over, and damaged some of our power lines at the ball fields where the lights are. So, the, the ball field lights are not insured, so we'll be wiring those back ourselves, I'm sure, with our electric company. But the roof is insured, and we had another little building that was damaged there as well that we've turned into insurance claim. And so, anyway, just need you to be aware of that, and we're taking care of it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. It's always good to have you. Trout?
I was going to say, can I ask the city manager something?
Why not?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Mayor. Update on downtown streetscape. I had talked to you a couple times about that, Chris, and we had a pitcher come in. One day this week, it showed the roads where, I think you said they did it when it was wet?
No, there's a water leak underneath that pavement. We're waiting to get Pearl Street before we can fix it.
Okay, so that's going to be fixed with Pearl Street?
After Pearl Street.
Okay, after, okay, also.
Because we would have to close that street off to fix that. We don't want to close three, two streets off on this way.
So, you won't have to when you fix it later?
We'll have to close it, but Pearl Street will be open.
Just one street, I got you. Okay, the other thing is, I got a picture today that, in Mr. Luton's end of ordinance, there was in here, he may be gone now. But a picture where, somebody hit their awning already. Did you see that?
No, I hadn't seen that.
But.
But we didn't change the layout of where the awning is. In fact, we added more concrete to try to keep them off the awning. So, they would have hit that awning regardless, whether the curb was there or not, apparently. If they've hit it, I hadn't seen that.
So, you're saying that the curb had nothing to do with it?
No.
Post has always been there.
The post was there before.
So, y'all both are saying that the.
The, the new curb should have kept that from happening.
Except it ran over top of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
They ran over it.
All right, the last thing is, is these changes on these curbs that, that we know has got to be done, has broke up. Is the city going to have to pay for that?
Probably.
Why?
Well, because it was designed for pedestrian safety, and now we're doing it a little different.
I would love that item be brought back with the council.
We can do that and bring the engineer back.
I, I just think it.
Where we're pouring it now, I don't see a difference in cost, other than just per unit price swapping out different, probably a little different size.
On these others, yeah.
On the new ones, but the redo is, is a different story altogether.
Well.
Contractually, I think that, you know, we're changing something from what was designed and specified. And so, it could be that we're issuing, we're changing something. I would, I would think that we're going to have to.
I'm just personally thinking, you know, they engineered it, and they knew what was going to happen when they put the truck back there, so.
Well, I'm with you. I work for you guys. You tell them what you want. Bring it back to board. I maybe don't want to vote up here for it, but I, I will vote for it, for them to pay. That's all right now. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Trout. And, and actually, Counsel, these, this report is similar to the citizens' participation, and after Chris gives that report, you're more than welcome to look at these items. And after listening to them, if you want to put them on a, on a later agenda item, so that we can discuss them or break them down, and so that the public's aware that we're going to be discussing those as such, and make any recommendations, or even make a, consider changing some of those items, you're welcome to do that, so. But thank you once again, Chris, for these reports. It's always good to have them, and it keeps the, not only the council, but the citizens out there informed on what, what we're doing out there. So, thank you very much for that. At this, Councilperson Meyer.
So, are you saying I can't ask a question in regards to the street project?
Go ahead. I let Ms. Brown, yes.
Okay. So, Chris, my concern is, how, how come we would have to ask the taxpayers to pay for something when clearly that line where they stop is not properly placed, which comprehen, it compromises the public walking through there, and also the structure? What is that, why is that our responsibility when we pay engineers to, to structure our corners? And that's one of the reasons why I contacted you after Ike, you know, has expressed his concern about this back in June, was to have them come back out here and explain why that design is, is, is right. And, and he agreed that, you know, we've got a problem out there.
Are, are you talking about, you talked to Chris Bosco? No?
No, I'm saying that's why back in June, when I contacted you and Gary and I met with you, and we called Chris to come out after. and we called Chris to come out after Ike asked us to do that, that we asked, you know, this is his design, and if it's broken and it's not correct because of where they placed the stop lane.
Well, the stop, the stop lane is per engineering standards, and if you look at the, where it's at, it's designed to stop the wheel and leave about two foot from the bumper, maybe less than two foot, from the bumper to the brick area where pedestrians are supposed to walk. So the idea is to stop your vehicle before you get where the pedestrians walk. Now then, we talked about moving that up, and we may do that, but I was also telling Councilmember, Council, Couch today, that if we move that up, it could eliminate the turn radius that somebody needs when they're turning to make that curve. And if you sit there and watch it long enough, you'll see what I'm talking about. Some of these cars or trucks swing over to the, to the left lane when they're turning right a little bit, and by the time they get turned back, it's before that, that stop mark is. But bottom line, it's a tight corner. It was a tight corner before we started. They designed it, I'm not going to defend them, let them come and defend what they did and tell you what they want to do or not do related to payment. But, you know, it was designed, those plans were submitted to us as they were bid out and they were bid, and now then we're wanting to change it. And it, it meets the cone layout that we laid out for the fire truck to go in the, in the site test model that we did. It does exactly what the curb lines showed when we measured it out. Granted.
Did it work then?
Yeah.
No.
Part of it.
Did not.
You know, but y'all knew, y'all knew what we had, and that's what we had bid out. Now then, if y'all want to change it, that's certainly within your right to say, let's change it, just like you would if you were painting a wall and you had it been painted green and you said, no, we need it beige instead. You can do that, it's just there's a cost to it. Now then, whether Freeze Nichols wants to absorb any of that cost or not, it's completely up to them.
I think this clearly needs to be an item that we bring back to the, the council when we have the engineers and also the scope of work and a price tag on it so that we can deliberate on it and talk about it, because I think there's a lot of folks, and I've looked at it too, that's not happy with what the results are. So at a, at a later date, I think that this would be an item that we probably going to see up at the council.
We won't want to miss that one.
We won't want to miss that one.
I can't, I can't weigh in there. Do it before I postpone.
I prefer you do, because I think, I think we need to really get into this real deep and bring it into a discussion item so that the citizens know it's going to be on there too, and they can have.
Well, we can't take any action tonight.
That's right.
You know, all you're doing is repeating what I've already heard from each of you, all right?
But we won't do that anymore, to be honest.
All right. I'm here to serve you. I just need to know what you want me to do next.
Okay, counsel. So now I'll declare that the Grandberry City Council is convened into open session, that all of our members are present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, Section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property, Section 551-087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations in Section 551-074, personnel matters, judicial judges, city secretary evaluation, Section 551-074 personnel matter to deliberate appointment, employment evaluation, assignment duties and discipline. Counsel, we've got some guests that are going to be back there with us, so if we could get back there and get these out, I'm going to have Mr., who we got first here? Sam Hughes, yeah. We're going to have Sam Hughes come back there first. So if you will, counsel, we will go into executive session. The city council is now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in executive session, but there's no items to discuss in the executive session, so no other items do be discussed. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
We performed an evaluation this afternoon, this evening, of our city secretary, and I wanted to publicly say that the council is impressed and very thankful and gracious for the service that Carla gives to our city. Based on her fine performance and her working so hard for the citizens of this city, we've authorized that she be given a three and a half percent, 3% raise for the budget year 2018.
That's an informed motion. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'd be more than happy. Two.
Sorry, they beat you to it there, Mr. Allen. No. Do we have a second by several council members?
Second motion by all of them.
Do we have a motion and a second? Counsel, any more discussion on that? I know everybody wants to applaud Carla very much, but she does do a great job for, for our city. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. We will authorize the city manager to do that. If there is no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.